Okay, Marilyn, you wanna open bylaws sometime for us to take care of the minutes?
Got the exact language, but I declare the meeting of the bylaw committee on Tuesday.
Six thirty one.
It's October twenty-sixth at six thirty-one, open.
I'll move to accept the minutes, so.
I'll second that.
Whatever date it was.
October sixth.
October sixth.
We have a motion to accept the minutes, is our discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay.
Okay, and at six thirty-two, let's open the.
You're planning.
Close that one, so. Yeah, you might be.
Oh, I have to close this. Okay, um.
Motion to close.
Motion to, we have a.
Adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
The time.
Six thirty-two and a half.
Six thirty-two and a half. Any discussion? Seeing, seeing or hearing none, uh, uh, would please vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bonnie just.
Oh, good. Bonnie, we just opened and adjourned.
All, all, all we had to do was approve the minutes from the last meeting. Now, you can hang around if you want.
Okay, I thought it was gonna be at the end of the other reading, so.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Good to have you hanging around.
I'll take your thing tomorrow first thing.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry to get you out, then.
That's okay.
Okay, so, looks like we're now at six thirty-three, let's open the planning board meeting. And we have minutes of our, what, September twenty-eighth meeting? That sounds right?
So you held those minutes because you wanted more information.
Correct. Oh, yeah.
And I did make the amendment that Marilyn mentioned at that meeting as well, so those are the highest version.
And I also researched the matter. I, I meant to bring the plan, but I forgot to bring it, but we, Karen Way is a private way. And so private way was never accepted through that subdivision from nineteen sixty-nine, Sunny Hill Estates, and we also, from the plan that was approved of the A and R for Prescott and Karen Way, the plan lists on it that Karen Way is private, but it's a private way.
So the town never accepted it to plow it?
No request apparently was ever made to have it accepted by the town, either by the.
By the developer.
By the developer or by anybody else. Because I don't know what happened with the developer, but the developer was not as informed.
No, the, the developer, the original passed and, and the cousin didn't want it anymore.
Yeah. And it's. I'm sure they plowed it anyway, though.
So that's the status?
Yeah.
All right.
It would be nice to find some nice way to be able to get all that straightened out enough to date, but I'll tell you, I don't really even know how.
Who does all the roads in town here? Who's supposed to certify all the roads in town? Years and years ago, it was the planning board, but that goes back.
Planning board, I believe somewhere I read that the planning board is in charge of creating an official map of the town.
That is correct. It was official roadmap.
But that, that, that's the only language that I recall. I don't recall any language about the planning board having anything to do with simply accepting a road that is basically not owned or claimed by anybody else.
I, um, someday I'll bring in all the boards.
Mr. Chair, may I enter for one second? Leah, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Um, I just wanted, if I may, through the chair.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, I think years, a few years ago, one of my first years on the select board, I thought the select board had received a document of all the, um, private ways that were taken care of by the town, and so there are, I think there are some, and I don't know because there was talk about stopping that and keeping everything else going and everything. I don't have that information in front of me right now, um, and I don't remember exactly when it was, but I'm, I think it was maybe my first year on the board, so I can try to look and dig it out and then just pass it on to you guys for information purposes.
Yeah, that might be helpful.
I would like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so was Gary, uh, was the DPW director at the time?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it was right, like, before Gary left, um, and Skip was on the board, so that's that time. I think that would've been my first, um, full year on the board, so I'll look and see what I can find, um, 'cause it was a conversation that the select board was having also, I think, at one point, not for, um, naming roads or accepting or anything, but just seeing what was private and being taken care of by the town versus wholly private and being taken care of by residents and whatever.
Uh-huh. I think it'd be a great idea if we can find that.
Now, that same plan, now what is it, Edith Way that Karen is off of?
Yes.
Yeah.
That plan showed Edith Way as a public way, right?
I don't know, we just had the, we just had the, the focus.
So that's when it was done. Edith and Cheryl Ann Drive were done at the same time, so the town could take it over.
And that was Gary's, in Gary's realm.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I asked the town clerk, and the town clerk says Cheryl Ann is public, Edith and Karen are private.
Edith is too.
Yes, that's what she said.
See, that, see, you know, I don't remember it ever being accepted. I remember talking about it. I remember going down there with Gary. I wasn't even looking at it, but I don't remember it actually being accepted.
We got.
I, I mean, this is something we can come, maybe come back to at a future point. For the purpose of the A and R, the A and R was properly granted.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's.
Because the frontage was on Prescott Street.
Frontage was on Prescott, so there's access from Prescott as far as it's been represented to us, so.
But I think, I think we need to have a, a good updated certified road list.
And as far as, for example, getting Edith accepted, I think that would fall through the select board.
It will.
They, they would have to initiate it. I don't know if they'd be interested in doing it.
I could've sworn that was part of it, that was brought up, but we'll find out in the near future. Okay, moving on.
Anything else on the minutes?
On which one?
Uh, September twenty-eighth, while I'm looking.
September twenty-eighth minutes.
We have a minute?
Yeah, there's ten twelve as well.
I got ten twelve.
The September twenty-eighth ones, they called just because of your question about Karen's way, so if you guys are okay with that, we still need a motion on that one.
Now, what about the other, so it was just on the Karen's Way?
Yes, and then Marilyn had a correction, I believe it had to do, I had put ten, but it was her that said it, and I've since made that revision and provided the revised copy to Dave, so I'm sure that's what you guys had in front of you.
I had just seen one thing on here, a statement that was, I don't know if I, now's the time, on, on the milk room.
What page and moment?
This was on third page, Jim.
Ten twenty-eight or ten twelve?
Ten twenty-eight.
Okay.
Nine twenty-eight, Robert.
Nine twenty-eight, yeah, yeah, right. September twenty-eighth. When Mr. Williams had asked about MDR, and I said I confirmed that I had a release from them, but I don't, I don't have a release from MDR, I never did.
Okay, I can check that out.
Yeah, well, you could just verify what I, 'cause I remember saying that I had a release. I had a conversation with Delia about the cars on the side of the road, but then we determined in the, that it wasn't, I just don't want that in there, 'cause I never had a release, remember allowing me to, or I don't remember ever stating that I did. I just wanna make sure that that's clarified in there. And I think the board understood the whole parking on the side of the road.
I, I remember thinking about it when, when you said that.
Well, you wiped out all the parking on the road, right?
Well, the way that it ended up was that the parking on the side of the road, because it's a variable with the street, and you're, you know, forty to fifty feet out, you don't know.
Right.
Where the property line is.
But didn't you revise your plan?
Well, we have, I mean, we had the event there last week, and we had, I mean, we had two hundred and something cars in that acre and a half all the way up and in, but we did still have some cars along, along the street.
But, and the question, the answer is yes, the plan was revised to show parking on site, where the prior plan showed parking on site and parking elsewhere on, on hillside. That was removed.
Okay.
But it's a ability to park on hillside because it's, it's in the public right of way, it doesn't need to show on the plan, I think.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure on that that didn't state that there was a release in it.
So we need to do it within the minutes, and if so, what?
The rest of it wasn't in there, it was just that one, one car.
Do we wanna delete the last part of the sentence where it says, and Kevin confirmed he has a release for them? That'll make it easier.
We are, um, where are you finding the page?
It's on the.
Third page, yeah.
Third, third page, bottom.
Well, it says page. Third page, one, page two, third page, Jim.
One, two, three, five, six.
Okay, I got it.
It says.
Sixth line down.
Dick asked.
Okay, I can get the.
Yeah, you'll see though.
You said you confirmed that you had a release.
Yeah, it said that I had a release from them, and I mean, which I don't, we had conversations, and they had no concern with me parking on the side of the street, and it was not the same verbiage, but it's, it was the same basic thing, that they just said that they don't, you know, with, they know it's not, one, it's not really agricultural land because of the amount of salt and all the, I mean, she went into all these things where there's, there's no reason for MDR to get involved with ten or fifteen or twenty feet on the side of a, of a paved road, so that was the conversation we had.
What you said. I'll go along with what you said. So just on that, uh, sixth line, wherever that was, just stop the sentence at, and Kevin confirmed that he has a release for them.
Okay.
And also, if I could just jump in on this, line seven.
A verbal release? Or do you have a written release? I don't mean that to.
No, I mean, that, you know, that's, that in lies the, which is totally achievable to get, and then someday down the road, I'd be willing to bet that I will have a site plan, release from them two parked cars on APR land.
Right, I'm just asking you.
But that's a whole nother conversation for this one, no, I mean, I would just, I would just take it right out, because it's not, it's not really, it's not even in the site plan map. You know, we took that side of the road basically out of the site plan application, 'cause it wasn't part of the site plan. It wasn't part of the six point seven seven acres.
Uh-huh.
If I could just, on the second, the line seven after that, however, he noted that a special permit would be required, it, it would actually be a site plan review be required to extend the uses onto other properties, not special permit.
Should I change to special permit, or should I just delete the whole section, delete it altogether?
If you delete it altogether, I don't see any harm in that, because it's, it's known and understood that any modifications would have to come back.
Okay.
For new application or modification. Anything else that you want.
Okay, I'll just delete that, the whole section, then, and get couple sentences.
Anything else on the minutes? Do we have a motion to accept with corrections?
Make a motion to accept the minutes with corrections.
I'll second that, on September twenty-eighth.
Right. Right. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Someone said we had.
October twelfth. I have got. I have a correction. I have a correction in the, uh, revision of definitive plan, but no states. When you, when you get. No, let me count the lines. Tenth line down, I believe.
Eight, nine, ten.
Yes, that it would be a easement granted to the town near the trail, and that should be wasd referenced in the special conditions.
What do I have there now?
It be, that it be referenced.
Oh, okay.
It's already in the special.
It's already in the.
Okay, so it's a grammar thing, but not an informational fact?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. And it's just at the bottom of that same thing they had, it said, field change. If the DPW director agrees in documentation, his approval, do we have that documentation? Before we get it?
I don't, were you expecting to get that by tonight's meeting?
Well.
Just something that's out there that we should just make sure we.
Make sure we get it.
Sure, I'll just, uh.
Make a, make a notation.
I'll just highlight that and follow up on that.
Okay. And then I'm gonna make a motion to accept the October twelfth minutes with correction.
Second.
I just have a comment on Maple Hill Estates, the report that we got from Quinn said he noticed some puddling, uh, after a rain.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I went up there yesterday, early afternoon, after the rain had stopped, and there is some, but to my, to my way of thinking, it doesn't really amount to a heck of a lot, uh, I'd say leave it to Joe Buckley, see what he says about it.
Just like, um, is it Sodori, no, not Sodori.
Sedona.
Sedona.
No, it's not, not.
Not that, not that bad, okay.
Not as bad as that, you know, but by the same token, Joe might still wanna do something with it.
Yeah.
But, uh, it didn't really seem to be a great extent.
Okay.
I was gonna say less, less than a quarter of an inch anywhere.
Oh, yeah.
You know, anyway, so it's just a comment. Anything further? On the October minutes? No, no other questions, comments. They had a motion and a second, didn't they?
Yep.
Yep.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then there was, um, the seven minutes, which I inadvertently listed as an item three unto itself, and it's a script as error, it should be minutes on the planning board, ten eighteen twenty-one.
Okay.
You should find those minutes in your supplemental packet, page three, item. Item one. The cover sheet is this, that's the first page.
Oh, that's what was on the.
Yep.
Do we have a motion?
I also move the minutes on October eighteenth.
All taken.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Uh, A and R. We have, we have no other mail or correspondence.
Sorry?
We have no other mail or correspondence?
Oh, no. Actually, we, well, we do have something from the conservation commission, which you can probably take under Maple Hill Estates.
Yeah, yeah.
The catch-all.
Okay, so it is Kenwood Court, Kenwood Drive, Walnut Street, A and R. There's this one, right?
Well, it's actually this, this, the two parts here is, there's the plan, it's the A and R itself, that is supplemental information which ties directly into the A and R for future action.
Um, yes, I'm Tom.
Oh, hey, Tom, thanks for coming up tonight. Put it, put it up on the screen if you just don't.
Late in the evening. So, um, do we have a plan that just shows the A and R itself?
Uh, you, you have that as a paper copy in the packet, and I also distributed some large copies to some of the other board members, and I have the bylaw right here.
Wow, okay, okay.
It's worth a couple of bucks, so you want the, you want the bylaw?
No, it's okay, this is a little easier for me to see. So.
It's also up to the screen as well.
Oh, it's even better.
So, Kenwood Court, is he certified public way?
Yes.
You know, Gary Lumentine's, uh, family's up there.
So exactly what, what do you want?
Um, I don't know, it's showing up there or here. So, basically, just, uh, three lots, the rest of Ralph McCockel's property and.
They don't need to hear of it, they should hear from us.
So, basically, we got two lots here, and then this rest of the remaining land encompasses everything else, so, um, through the Water Protection Act and stuff like that, you know, it's better to go through here for access to here than try and go in there and stuff, so that's why we're proposing a common drive to access lot eight and nine, so that's the, the second part to this, which, uh. So, lot nine is gonna be classified as an estate lot?
No.
It has frontage. Where? All the way around here. Because of the wetlands there.
It's, that's, is that on, you're proposing now?
Is it all the way over there?
Yeah.
Are you proposing this as an estate lot?
No.
No.
I didn't think so. But I do have a.
Is it further, can you further subdivide this?
Would be pretty rough.
Yeah, it'd be rough. No, because. I know it'd be rough, but what I'm saying is, I know that maybe isn't the intent, but. Yeah, it's. With the frontage over here, it's. With the, um, the DCR involved and stuff like that, the watershed protection and all that, then this is kind of the, this is it. This is the last of the lots.
It'll be pretty substantial well I'm crossing to get over this.
So this part that's over near Norm, that it's included in this section?
Yeah.
Yes.
There's, there's a stone wall here, but it's.
Right, I see that.
It's not the boundary.
No.
Um, the, the locust map kinda shows it pretty good. Did you see the beep? Oh, this is like.
That's what I figured out, but I wanted to make sure.
And the boomers are down, they're gonna be, yeah. So this is the hay, the small hay field right here.
See this one here?
Yeah, yeah. It does not show these two fields, it shows that this is the bounds here, or is it this, and comes up this way around? Yep.
Yeah, it's kinda clarifying.
Four hundred and something feet there.
In the, in the locust map, oh, right here, this one. This is just a stone wall that runs through, if you can kinda see it better on this larger map.
Okay.
And, uh, the locust map kinda clarifies it.
Where, do we know where it ends up here for town, the town right away ends? Is it the pavement, 'cause it does turn to gravel, and then it turns right up to Derek's house, and then there's all the way up to the nuts makers up there, and he putting in a couple houses up there?
It's kinda on the locust map kinda shows it.
Yeah, if you go farther, up off of Turkey Hill.
Yeah.
Straight up this, I'm just curious where this ends, right? It is, but he would come in up over this way, but then I'm just, you know, just describing where does that?
It, it, locust map kinda shows.
That's pretty, so it goes quite a bit past.
Yeah, 'cause you got this lot here, and then there's others.
Yeah, 'cause, right, there's a house here, there's another house here, and then there's Derek's house is over there.
And the solar field is there.
It's up here.
Yeah, kinda.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, somewhere right in there.
Yeah, 'cause, yeah, 'cause you go up, and then there's the newer house right here. Then Derek's house, and then that's the, the hill up there, that view up there, ooh.
Yeah.
We just hate 'em, we just did it. And so this common drive is gonna be owned by.
Correct.
With easements to lot eight.
Correct.
And then driveway for lot seven is right off of.
Yeah.
Is that to be determined, kinda?
Uh, no, we, we kinda.
'Cause you have two openings there, don't you, already? Is there almost two kinda driveways into that field?
Yeah, I mean, you could, yes.
You could either come in down here, or you could come in up over there.
Right, and so this is the develop, the, um, septic designs and stuff, so you got one driveway, you got your common driveway. And, uh, so that is the.
But you're not applying the common driveway at this time?
Well, we applied, but I guess, uh, couldn't do the meetings together or something.
I can speak to that, um, there's, as the board knows, there's several timelines to act on the A and R. And the site plan. So the, to avoid the A and R being constructively approved, we had to take it first.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I didn't quite understand that myself. I didn't quite understand that myself on that.
Well, and A and R has to be reviewed within twenty-one days, although it is constructively granted.
Oh.
We were not in a position to get the legally added in on a timely basis to have the site plan sync up with the A and R.
Yeah.
Because of the timing deadlines for publication to the newspaper. This does not require a public hearing, it requires just a meeting. So, so we just sang it out and do this first, and then schedule the.
So that, that could be utilized as a washing down there.
Yeah, that makes sense, I didn't really think of that.
You could, no, the other one, you could break that off.
No, that's the reason for it.
Yeah, actually, probably could, I don't know, there's no area, but this, well, I don't know.
There's, there's a lot of.
You're saying that's only a little over two acres.
Yeah.
So this one, that's less than two acres.
There's a lot of, um, a lot involved with the watershed, and this is, you know, gone through DCR and approved, so this is this is pretty much yet, you know, someone else comes in to divide this, they're gonna find they don't have the, you know, they're taking too much of the watershed area. I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but it's, we, you know, we tried to maximize.
They, they, well, they, they couldn't get another lot. They, they, well, they couldn't get another lot out of this without getting into this area.
Right.
There isn't enough area to do it. There's not enough area right here. Well, actually, no, actually, maybe there is.
Yes, because it's in a different zone.
I can tell you, we're not planning on it. But then again, then again, we developed this and somebody else stuck another lot in it.
I'll come over here, wasn't our sixty.
Mm-hmm.
Tackler's property over here was not our sixty.
Was this, yeah, it's a split zone. I mean, there's different zones.
Land of zone residence, our sixty.
So, this side.
No, so it's the other side of the road?
Maybe, maybe.
Because I brought that up a long time ago with, with Rochelle, uh, not Rochelle, but, uh, Tackler.
I didn't think the R forty went that far, anyway.
Yeah, all right.
So, anybody, any issues?
Nope.
We have a check?
Any more?
We don't.
Okay.
And then the next up would be that plan, which is the site plan for the three lot con, uh, the two lot common driveway, which will be scheduled in November.
Yeah.
But we figured, um, well, there's a requirement that we pre-application meeting, we figured the applicant could just come in and talk to that, that would hopefully save that.
Yeah.
Okay.
One thing I do have for the applicant is that the bylaw requires that all lots here in a common driveway must have adequate frontage as reported by the zoning district where the lots will be, where the lots are located. It appears that this lot, frontage for lot nine might be fronted that is illusory frontage, meaning that it's not apparent how you can actually physically access the street to the lot. I think for the purposes of the board granting the site plan, you're gonna want to get some alternative approach to get from Kenwood to lot nine, such as if you put in a crossing or some alternative, and why that's not feasible. And why the common driveway is the fe, is the preferred approach.
Re, yeah, I mean, common sense is, says, if you want, like, design work and all that, that's a waste of time and money.
I think we're looking for your, your professional judgment on what would be an alternative. We're not looking to get engineering plans.
Okay.
You're just looking to be able to make a finding of fact that you did consider access from Kenwood, but it's not feasible because of...
Right, and, and it is, you're saying at that meeting, yeah, because...
At that meeting.
This is the, you have the, um, you got wetlands here, and then you also have the high water marks right here, you know? So, there is possible access that way, and it isn't feasible. I mean, it isn't the best situation here, this, this is the best situation to access it.
All right, so we were just going to be finding a fact and not a fact. Just when you were judging, we'll build that into the decision.
Right, right, sure.
Or we'll then be aware of it when...
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, do we have a motion?
Motion to endorse our A plan, Tom Fancy.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Can we make a, um, condition like wetlands that he has to replace hayfield somewhere on Rockland? Wouldn't it be, you know, I'm gonna go on record, you know what, it'll never happen?
Yeah, I know what.
But it's beautiful hayfields, and it's, you know, it's gonna be beautiful houses, and I'd get it all, but I've been doing it for five years, and this, that small little field produces some pretty frickin' hay. It does.
All right, so, the amount of fields that he's taken away there, he must clear the land, uh, down on land?
Maybe like over here or something?
No, down on Route sixty-eight, he must clear a lot, land up there, there's a twenty-something acre up there.
Hey, you know, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, I know it can't happen, but wouldn't that be nice? Because we're losing hayfield, we're losing hayfields. You know what, it is what it is, I second the motion, I'll stand on my second, and I don't have any discussion.
Yeah, we, we do a lot of APR surveys, protecting all the fields.
Yeah.
But on the upside, we gotta do...
No, believe, hey, I'm right there, I, I get it, but I've been, it's been a slow, it's a slow...
And I love when we do, you know, save a field.
Yeah, right.
We're doing one up in Buckland right now.
Yeah.
Did you vote?
No, we gotta do the official, I second.
Aye.
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 Just watching.
Today is the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
When I, when I was just over there, we cut a, we cut a line in from Metzmakers up top, all the way down to, um...
You guys got a line actually?
Over on the other side there, so, I don't know how, we haven't, I haven't seen that one unless that came through six months ago. Those three lots there, has that come through, yeah?
Yeah. You're talking about up on the hill, same side over this?
You go to, have you been up there?
Yeah.
That field where they got the three, they got the three trees in the middle of the big field, you go to that very top corner, you're looking, it's like...
It's a huge...
It's beautiful, it's one of the beautiful views of Rockland, yeah. The road goes right down.
Because Addison Woodfield was with us when the dark night came up, and he's the one that operated on this bike.
Metzmakers, right?
Yeah. Right, Bobby, you got it, all right?
Yeah.
I heard it was gonna be three lots, one on the top, and then two next to it, going down to the road, yeah? It's another, another field going.
You guys are out here too much, I've noticed.
Yeah.
And, and you're right, I mean, we should make a bylaw on this town from this point.
This was a project, because I, I own the business, it's expensive for ten years.
Create. You're gonna take away, you're gonna create.
You're gonna take it out, you're gonna do it. And even if it is town-owned land, you're right, why not? The town will even give you the land, you could go in and stump it, grind it, and till it, and get some, plant some seed in there. Get some hay, because some farmers are gonna come in and start to hay it if it's decent, somebody will.
That'll be a tough one to get through.
I know. Where would you like this? Everybody loves their cheeseburger, but nobody cares where it comes from. I told you, don't smear it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, let it... It's this one we have to sign. We have to sign three of these?
The paper copy, I don't think so.
I don't know, I think those are just for our own purposes.
Dave wants them.
Our own, if Dave wants them back.
In case I, yeah.
Yeah, they, yeah, let him.
I add it to the file, because I don't have enough. You can take it if you want.
I don't need to hang on to it, that's tough for Dick, he's gonna give something like that up.
I, I, I think I have enough, I have enough for this time, which is great, thank you very much for giving, giving us enough copies of this.
Oh, okay, you want these?
When are you guys starting on this now, you know?
Oh, it's, it's gonna be sold, and then whoever buys it, so...
Oh, so this hasn't even been?
No, we're, then we still gotta do a public hearing for the common driveway, and then the board...
I don't, I mean, sometimes you already have people lined up or whatever.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a hot market.
No, fifteen acres in Rockland, that, I mean, that back lot, I mean, they're all, they'll be a nice little quiet spot.
You don't have a sticky, you know, do you throw it out?
I'm not sure, we're good.
You're gonna roll it this way with the rain.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for coming up.
All right, yeah, thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
You too.
Okay, see, number three minutes, uh, subcommittee we already took care of. Number four, information session for the accessory dwelling unit bylaw.
Great, thank you, um, I just wanted...
It's movie time, it's movie time.
I just want to check with, um, Caleb and make sure that after seeing this, um, the public's seen that. Just a quick second.
You got that, Leah?
I can see it, is that the question?
Do you have the presentation?
Yep, he's giving you a thumbs up.
Oh, good, thank you.
I'm on Zoom, I'm on Zoom, but I can see it.
All right, um, so I appreciate the opportunity for the second information, um, information forum presentation on the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. So, I guess first off, you know, what is an accessory dwelling unit? Uh, the accessory dwelling unit is a, pardon me, is a, uh, I mean, all the, pardon me, all right?
Thankful, I'm not the one running the slide.
Yeah.
An accessory dwelling unit is a second unit on a lot, a second dwelling unit on a lot, which means requirements that accessory unit bylaw, which we'll discuss further. Uh, the second dwelling unit can be located in, in an existing dwelling, created through an addition to an existing dwelling, or located in a detached structure. The separate dwelling unit includes its own sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities. All types of accessory dwelling unit would be allowable by special permit from the planning board. So, you know, what's the purpose of the bylaw, you know, why is it needed, what's, what's the reason for it? Uh, over the last several years, the building department and planning office have received several inquiries regarding the construction of accessory apartments. Um, a lot of these come from elders who are in town who would like to stay in town, in ancient place, and obtain additional revenue to offset higher real estate taxes. Other groups would also be served by allowing accessory dwellings. Um, there's all kinds of various family situations which, which may benefit from this. Um, as an example, we were, we could focus in on the, the growing population of over fifty-five, and as you can see, that population is rapidly increasing. And we think this is gonna be one of the major groups who may have interest in this type of dwelling here, so we're, we're focusing here as an example. So, from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, that population of age group fifty-five to eighty-five plus has grown from twenty percent to twenty-eight percent. Which is in line, um, more or less, is slightly lower than, than the region as a district. The central mass regional planning district is pretty much central Massachusetts, and they have seen the increase of twenty-five percent of area population to thirty-seven percent total population of age fifty-five to eighty-five. So, the population's definitely growing, and there's a strong need for people to want to stay in the community, which they have strong ties, uh, friendships and so forth. In addition, the median house price has increased from twenty-eleven to twenty-twenty-one, in, in town here, it's increased thirty-five percent. Which kind of mirrors the increase in Worcester County, which has increased sixty-three point five percent from twenty-eleven to twenty-twenty-one. And as we know, where the taxes go up, as, as value goes up for a dwelling unit. Um, how, how would the bylaw work, what is, what are some of the details? Some of the details are the following, so the bylaw would consist of a maximum of one thousand square feet if it's located in an existing dwelling, or if it's in a detached structure. Otherwise, it could be forty percent of the area of the existing structure if it's created by way of an addition to an existing structure. Um, there would be a limit to the number of bedrooms, with two, it would be located in the R forty and R sixty zoning districts only. It would have an onsite parking requirement of three total spaces, both for the existing unit and the accessory apartment, and the owner would have to reside in one or the other of the units. Uh, the permit process is pretty straightforward, it's pretty much in line with other permitting that will come before the planning board. We would recommend that folks have a conversation with the planning office prior to starting this. Otherwise, you know, we can help the applicants work through the permitting process through the planning board, which would be a special permit. Uh, then it's pretty much standard, you know, that the decision would be filed with the registry of deeds, a building permit would issue after that. Um, and other permits will be required as needed, such as board of health. The background for this, so how did this come together? The background really is, as we talked about earlier, there were several conversations with residents who wanted the opportunity to create this type of dwelling unit, and found that there was no real pathway in the zoning bylaw that allowed that. Uh, in early twenty-twenty-one, based upon that initial information, we had discussions with the regional planning commission, we obtained their assistance, we worked on model bylaws, which were then reviewed with the building commissioner and research that he did to identify what are some of the most typical attributes of an accessory apartment. And then after that, we worked with the planning board by law subcommittee from July until October twenty-one to draft a bylaw. Now, then we had the information session, one was October twelfth, and the, and the one that's happening tonight. The next step is the information session happening here, then a public hearing shortly thereafter this information session, then meetings with the select board, FinCom, and other groups as needed. It's my understanding that the select board and the FinCom will be meeting on Thursday to, uh, place articles and approve, and then the special town meeting is scheduled for November eighteen. In summary, the accessory dwelling unit bylaw is a common bylaw to encourage housing options for various groups, including elders. Many, more than half the municipalities in Massachusetts have such a bylaw. The bylaw that the board has under its consideration tonight represents best practice, and that the proposal is also consistent with the master plan survey results encouraging various diverse housing options. Uh, for more information, folks can contact the planning office as shown here, and the bylaw itself is available on the town's website at the link. Thank you.
Okay, now, first of all, this is presentation you're intending to give at town meeting, right?
If, if, if the time allows and it's acceptable, yes, otherwise, I would put the, put this, I'd make a, I'd make a packet, including the presentation, the bylaw, the planning board's report, and the warrant language. And put that all together, as well as putting the presentation up on the website, and doing a blast on, uh, town social media that this information can be found there. I realize that usually the moderator doesn't encourage presentations depending on the length of the meeting, uh, but if it's warranted, I would do it. Um, I'm also agreeable to meeting with the council on aging and other groups who would like to have more information about this.
Uh, what, what is the rest of your feelings about? But I mean, I could kind of time this thing, and it wasn't even five minutes. About even...
There'd be some discussion here and there. Is there anybody that's gonna be, um, size of lots, I mean, is there anybody that would like to do this, and then all of a sudden they find out they can't? Because, yeah, their lot isn't big enough, or, you know, in addition, you know, because maybe they only have ten feet on either side, and, you know what I mean? Is that, is that a possibility? And if so, then somebody's like, I want to do this, but I can't, so why, you know what I mean, is there, is that?
We've addressed lot size by treating, so it's a single-family dwelling.
Mm-hmm.
Is really what it's, having this class, this land use class is. So, if it's low, if a house is currently located on a previously non-conforming lot, meaning that the lot doesn't meet the current zoning requirements, if someone wants to modify the structure, as long as the structure meets the setbacks, the structure can be modified just by special permit. So, the fact that the lot is non-conforming is not held, is not a, a penalizing factor to prohibit the accessory dwelling unit.
Okay.
Where they, if there's an issue with encroachment on the setback, because that's the way the existing structure is located, they may need additional zoning relief from the zoning board. By way of variances from the setback requirements, but not from this.
Okay, I guess, I mean, my whole point is that when something comes up, there's an avenue, either with the zoning commissioner or us, to answer anybody's questions, concerns, problems.
Well, yes, we would want to sit down with folks early in the process. One thing that this bylaw does do is, in the ordinary case, if a structure is non-conforming that needs to be modified where it's non-conforming, that would ordinarily have to go to the zoning board. To try to consolidate the permitting process, that's a function of this, of the planning board. We made as much of this as a function of the planning board as possible, except for variances which you can't, the planning boards, they, they cannot create variances. So, we try to consolidate the process as much as possible.
Right, okay.
If, you know, for those situations where that may be necessary.
You can't, you can't say that every lot in town...
Yeah, is gonna be able to do this, right.
Be able to do this without some...
Fully understandable, and that's, I just want to make sure that...
I, I, I even think of...
People at least get an, if, if you have to say no, it doesn't happen, then at least there's a justified answer to why.
Well, we try to reduce the amount of permitting necessary for it. There's no requirement for area per se, that was intentional, to try to make it as smoother a process as possible.
See, I can even see in our open space, where we allow lots as little as fifteen thousand square feet, and if they're building these McMansions, and they still want to expand, it could be on a tight fit. You know, so it, it could happen. But that, that part, we can't really do anything about.
It's gonna be up to zoning.
Yeah. So, a- anyway, what are the rest of your feelings about presentation at town meeting?
Uh, yeah, we've...
Depending on the ward.
We've generally done a present, a quick presentation on, you know, anything that the planning board, of significance that the planning board puts out, so, uh...
I mean, I think the last, the ag bylaw, there was no presentation for that, um...
I mean, I think, you know, like, um, personally, I've done several presentations myself, um, generally, I'm trying to think of one that wasn't terribly significant, but, you know, as Norm started to say, let's say, a very short, succinct, nice presentation you have here. And I, I would certainly consider having, you know, putting it up.
You know, the bottom line is, no matter how much you publish outside... You know, the bottom line is, no matter how much you publish outside.
Right.
An awful lot of people are never gonna read it, never gonna see it.
Never gonna hear about it.
To them, it's gonna be a surprise at town meeting. So if you can fill them in with.
You're right, and all the questions are gonna come up, so you run through this first, maybe that answers the questions.
That, that's, you know, that's my thoughts anyway.
Right.
If it opens up the discussion, then I'll just open up more discussion, I guess. I can't see any, I don't see the negative in this. I don't see this, I mean, I'm sure, I'm gonna come up with a bumper second, somebody's gonna complain. We know somebody's gonna say, this isn't good for the town, this isn't good, and I'm trying to wait to see what that, what the negative feedback is gonna be, maybe we find out.
It should be, it should be a no-brainer.
Like you say, somebody is always gonna come up with something, but I think we have a pretty good understanding of the law and can answer the questions.
And I think it's a benefit to the town, it's a benefit to, you know, people in the town, and, you know, yeah, keeps, keeps your family close to home and some income and.
I think what we're talking about, how to present it to, not, not just so much the benefit of it, but how to get people to see what you just said, that it is, is good for the town.
If the warrant is long.
And we're at the end.
And we're at the end.
Well, I know two things that are not on it.
Oh, some road acceptances? Didn't happen, I'm assuming at this point, right?
And, thank God, the bylaw, your, at heart bylaws, you know.
Oh, we're not, we're not even close on that.
Oh.
Thank, thank.
I don't even want to think about what.
You'll probably have to have a stretch of reading just for that.
But I, I don't know what, what's on the, on that warrant.
We tossed around, whenever it does come around, that it would be a two-day annual town meeting. You'll have one day for the rest of the warrant and one day just for that.
That would be a good idea.
Two successive Saturdays, you know.
Because then you'd only have the people who really care about how the bylaw is.
Well, Dave, I mean, what do you, you think that, maybe we don't need it?
I think I'd have.
You have it printed out?
Supragative, I'll, I'll print it out.
And hand it to him.
I'll shrink it down to like three pages. I think it's prerogative of the moderator, if he sees fit to.
Have it at, at his, you know, at his fingertips.
He won't, he won't object.
And if people ask questions, we can, I don't know. We want it to get, we want it to pass. Um, what's the best?
I've just never heard of any.
Best chance of us getting it passed.
Any question to anything that we wanted to present.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll think in mind of a presentation for a town meeting.
Yeah, and, you know, even if you do, if you think there is some stuff that you can shorten up a little bit, you know, you know. Attention span is usually about three minutes.
I was trying to.
That was right about there, though, I mean, it wasn't much farther than that, and then, you know.
It wasn't much more than that, so.
And then, as you said, there's always gonna be the people who sort of stand up and ask controversial questions.
Even after you're done, I'll even stand up and say, you know, this is what I just said. I said, this is a big benefit to the town, and we looked at it every, every possible different direction, and we see nothing but, nothing but positives here, and we hope you all endorse. Sit down and wait for somebody.
Maybe someone will pop this, like, stand up and say, yeah, we're gonna be nothing but a whole bunch of apartment buildings in town, you know.
Right. They'll rent them to anybody.
Yeah.
And they'll say, yes, that may happen.
I mean, all the undesirables.
Right.
Because there's so much to do in Robin for the undesirables. Where are these undesirables gonna go? Some people don't realize, they're not gonna come here, there's nothing for them to do.
How many dairy barns do we have?
Yeah, what are they gonna do there? Organize, organize the crap?
Yeah.
And, and. All, all the stanchions will have their little homes, a little bedroom.
There you go, maybe.
Anyway, I'd just say, well done.
I, I like this.
I definitely.
Fire away, keep going.
Let's do it.
I mean, then if he does say.
Put some color in it.
I'm coloring the headings, whoops, where's my heading here? I have colored the headings, some.
Pictures of some daisies and flower pots.
I have a picture, a front end, color for the headings.
I think it's perfect.
Grandmother and grandfather are on the chairs, they're on the front floor. Anyway, okay.
These have some pretty amazing.
Good statistics.
It really is. Hopefully, it's because people are living longer, right?
Mm-hmm, that's a big part of it.
Staying in town.
What do we got?
Okay, next up is the public hearing on this same bylaw proposal. So, uh, let's open the hearing at seven twenty-six. And, I don't know, I guess I'll start as usual with the planning board, are there any comments on this, even though we've already been discussing it?
Trying to find my agenda from all these papers. Not that I'm disagreeing with you.
Since the hearing opened, I just want to say thank you to David for all his work and everybody else that was on the subcommittees. And I'm looking forward to having it in town meeting and getting it passed, hopefully.
Do you have any comments?
I'm gonna say no.
I don't, I didn't, I've looked at it too many times.
Yeah, well, that's just it, you know.
It's Leah, I have a question, if I may.
Yes.
Um, I think this is kind of covered, but, um, with board of health, is that for septic and well, water, sewer, all of those considerations?
Yeah.
Okay, because I'm not sure how the septic well works on, um, some of the zoning for this bylaw specifically. But I know that there are, um, most septic systems have like a bedroom limit or whatever, and so I just, that's the only thing that I can think of that people might question. I think it depends who's at the, um, meeting, but I think that you guys did a really good job. I know it was a lot of time and effort and everything, and so I appreciate it.
No, you bring up a good point, because that could be one of the limitations, where you could have a perfect lot.
Yeah.
But now you can't build the adequate septic system on that lot to now add two bedrooms and one bathroom. You know what I mean? It isn't the bedrooms, it's the ba, no, it's the bedrooms, not the bathroom, so you'd have to add both. Minimum of a bedroom, minimum of one bathroom on the accessory dwelling unit, they were probably some that may not work, because one, the septic system, the area isn't big enough, or the landscape isn't, you know, for whatever reason, that could be the no, the no-go.
Or it should be, in this town, it could be so old for ground out that.
It's gotta get rebuilt and all that, so they would need a title five in a lot of cases to add.
Automating the septic system is a big ticket these days.
It's a big ticket, that's right.
I think that we had some discussions of that in our meetings, you know. Speaking as the chairman, we had discussed that and decided that it's, it's really a board of health issue, and I think that's.
But it's, it's necessary.
Right.
It will be part of the process.
Right.
Thank you, and I think I did hear in the presentation that board of health was, would be involved in, in the process somehow. Um.
Yeah.
Maybe, so I just wanted to make sure, like I said, that's the thing that I could picture being a question, not a hindrance by any means to getting the bylaw passed, but just a question that people may have, like I said, it depends who's at the meeting. Thank you, guys, all.
You're welcome, Leah.
Anything else from the board?
Please, do you hear a point?
No, I, I, uh, like Norm says, read it enough times.
Yeah.
Okay, then is there any questions or comments from the public?
That was the only one.
I think.
Leah's the only one.
I think she's the only one on.
Yeah, I believe so.
This is the kind of thing that I'm a little bit afraid of, you know, with all the public hearing.
Nobody comes in, done the notices, done everything else.
So that's, that's, that's the, hey, how did this thing get on the warrant?
Right.
You know, kind of thing again. What do we know about it?
But I'm also looking at this whole thing as a benefit to all these builders in town. You know, I'm looking at this going, jeez, if I knew this and I was a builder in town, I'd want to know all about this, so I can now start knocking on some doors, maybe, and saying, hey, we got this opportunity. You want a garage, but guess what I can do now? This wasn't really allowed before, but now it is, I can put this up above your garage, it doesn't.
Particularly some of the smaller builders.
You know, so they could, these builders should be educating themselves on this bylaw.
Even the small ones are so busy. We were trying to get somebody to take a look at why our roof was changing colors, and who, nobody could come. I think the reason, to go back to your point, that, you know, we didn't have more interest tonight, is that in past bylaws, when we were presenting past bylaws, we had a separate meeting that was more advertised. You know, there was more, more awareness in the community that we were working on that particular bylaw.
Because we also did not have the, I'll call it, social media availability that we have now.
Right.
To really kind of promote it.
And I think that's something that, hopefully, the people, when the warrant gets done and posted out there. If anybody's interested in it, it'll be available for them to look at.
I'd like, see, I'd even like to see something on the town sign, the new sign out there.
Same here, yeah.
You know, log, log on to the website to learn about the new accessory dwelling unit bylaw.
Agreed.
Yeah. Can we do that, Dave?
Yes, we can, yes, certainly, we can ask what to be put on the sign, once the social media.
Yeah.
And then once the warrant comes out, you say that's Thursday?
That's the place, then, yes, so shortly thereafter.
And then when does it become public?
November fourth.
Four days before the meeting?
November fourth.
Right.
The eighteenth is the meeting.
The eighteenth is the meeting, okay, so you got four, you got two weeks, okay, cool, okay. Because once that's out, you know, that's another time to at least get out there and say, hey.
Mm-hmm, that's a good point.
People start to read the warrant, and then they start to, no, some, I mean, not every, believe me, not everybody, but.
Some people do, yes.
I'm not saying people are lined up at the town hall waiting to get the first print copy hot off the press, but, you know, you start to at least get it available and you start reading it, and.
It says another avenue for exposure.
Another avenue, too, council on aging, maybe.
Dave already said that.
I've done a reach to the council on aging, through their director.
Yeah.
Um, indicating that this exists, that he will make a presentation. I guess I'll even furthermore, I'll just send out the copy of the bylaw, if it's approved, you know, recommended favorably tonight, I will then certainly copy the bylaw to the council on aging for anybody that want to distribute it to.
I do, I want, and this is another thing, just for down the road, where if we had a business administration, you know, and you have kind of like subcategories of things, you could send this out to all the builders or all the modelers and stuff, and say, just as an FYI, it's a way for them, as they're building or even designing these houses, or just, you know, you got a option in ten or fifteen years, maybe put the driveway this way now, or maybe do that that way now, just because this is available to you, if you ever want to put a detached garage, and it changes the mentality of.
I know Dave's got quite a stack of stuff to do, but it's too bad that he and Nancy can get together and have a presentation. You know, a shot one, but a presentation, something like that.
Well, the council on aging, isn't, are they meeting a lot regularly? Because, I mean, the seniors tend to close to
No, it's a little, no.
While they're open, just to see, like, you're not having girls go meetings in there, and.
No, but I'm saying this.
No, I don't, I don't think they ever, they haven't done that for years.
Well, I think it's only for seniors at this point.
But it's been that way for a long time.
I thought it was just since COVID hit.
Pardon, no.
I thought it was just since the COVID.
I love the crush of street, so I get a little more understanding of what goes on there, and it used to do that, but then they, the seniors pretty much utilize all that area, and they you know, they take care of it and.
I just meant as far as getting them, having a presentation, I don't know if they all get together.
Right.
No.
Well, there's, there's quite a few people that show up in that area, so.
Yeah.
And who is it for?
Yeah. I, I was just, you know, thinking about the, you know, the houses that they're building today. That, there's probably a lot of the newest houses that are probably big enough to have an in-law apartment contained right in them, as they're built almost.
Yeah.
Right.
I just, I, I couldn't believe it, I was, I looked in the Sunday paper, because they have all the real estate transfers. One of Elbeg's houses, I think down on Glenwood.
Yeah.
Eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
It's one heck of a big place.
Yeah, but they're really even not so big, no, it's amazing.
No, at least get some big ones down.
No, he does, but I mean, it's not, they're not the McMansion ones, they're, they're large houses, but.
Okay, anyway, um, any further comment from the board or the public?
Nope.
I'd like to entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I'll so move.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
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 And, uh, at seven thirty-six. Well, that was.
It's a little, it's a little one down at the bottom side of the screen, I don't know if you can see it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so the clock is off.
All right.
And I will entertain a motion to make a favorable recommendation at town meeting.
I'll so move.
On this, on this.
On this bylaw proposal.
Pro zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
Accessory dwelling unit.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, moving right along, you guys.
Yep.
Okay, number six, hearing on Brimble Estates subdivision. Basically, we don't have the information that we need to finish that up. We don't have the A and R lots that we said we wanted to have, I guess we got one of them?
One of the A and Rs is prepared, and the other one will be ready in time for the next meeting on the ninth of November.
So, with that, uh, and actually, I even talked to Mr. Blair today. At the planning board office. My telephone. So, and then you do do another continuation, Dave, have you got dates?
The continuation and then the extension for final action deadline.
Yeah, you want to fill in the dates, it's all decided.
So, today is the tenth twenty-sixth. To the ninth of November, do you have a calendar, anything?
I don't.
Yeah, the ninth is Tuesday.
Two, so seven.
Eighth is a Monday.
Six forty-five, you want to do it at the same time, six forty-five?
Yeah, probably would. Anything else?
Eleven nine twenty twenty-one, two, actually, we got it at seven here.
Yeah.
There is another matter that's been scheduled already for the ninth. I forgot the time of it, um, it's for the car wash.
Yeah.
Then there's a marijuana hearing, well, I don't know, I have the, if you do them all at the same time, don't. I'll just do six forty-five.
Yeah.
And then the extension for the final action deadline. It was November thirtieth.
I guess I'm a thirty.
I would do this on the thirtieth, yeah. So this is Brimble Estates subdivision. So it's two motions, one for the continuous, one for the final action deadline.
So it's a motion to continue public hearing to November ninth at six forty-five?
Six forty-five. Okay.
Do I have that?
You have a motion, so move.
I second.
Second discussion. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion to extend the time limit for final action to, uh, from eleven thirty to twelve thirty twenty-one.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
Okay, a motion to extend the time for, uh, final action.
Oh, okay.
To twelve thirty twenty-one.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that one.
Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Let's see, next up, we have Maple Hill subdivision, and I don't think we have anything.
Your correspondence, see the fact from the conservation commission?
Oh, yeah.
Then just a comment regarding the warrant and the street substance matter.
Just, just, uh, hold on one second, back up to that. One of the things that it, it's not showing in here, and it's in our conditions, is the connection to the rail trail.
Operator, so the, um, correspondence, the last one up here.
And I just want, want to make sure, because I want to see it on a plan. How the heck did it, rail chill, rail trail connection, show it, walk it, build it. It's in the special conditions. Mr. Blair acknowledged it at the, you know, and I believe it was... But I don't ever see it on any plans, and I'm done with it, I want to see it on a plan, I don't want to go through with the hassle we did the last time.
So, was it a condition?
Yes, special condition, it was way back.
It's listed in there.
Yeah.
It wasn't just a discussion.
And, uh, that was part of the original, when we signed the ANR originally, it was part of the conditions way back then.
And it just hasn't?
Special conditions. I went to the office, Dave pulled out the book, saw it right in there, listed right in there. Brought it up on our, uh, when we were there in person, brought it up to him then, and I brought it up at our last meeting, he, he was right here.
Do we have a accessible map as to where the discussed connection was? I mean, I'm assuming your fear is that he's going to build a house where we're going to be...
Well, he, he doesn't show how to get from the cul-de-sac.
That's what I want to make sure I follow.
Out to here, he says, originally, he says, okay, I said, how's the people going to get to the open space?
Those plans are up on the screen as well, for reference, if anybody else might be interested in following.
So, down, he says, well, you get, you, you're gain entrance down by the detention pond.
Which is down...
Put your hand up in the air, and I'll tell you which way to move it, keep going, keep going, right there, that's the detention pond.
That's the detention pond.
So, where, uh, the, just to the left of it is how you're going to come in, right around that detention pond.
So, this is a lot, there's a lot, there's a lot, there's a lot, right?
Somehow, yeah, it just does not show it.
This open space is going to come in through here.
Yes, open space, yeah.
And then where's the rail, oh, there's Molten Pond.
Rail, rail trail, keep going way over to the right, it's, yeah, it's way over there.
Where is the actual detention pond?
Right, right in that area.
It's not, well, it's not shown well, because there is...
I mean, that's just a square footage marker, there's like all these little lots.
There is an access ramp that goes down from the berm and the backside of the, of the detention pond to what is natural ground level, which leads to a path directly to the rail trail across DCR land.
Across DCR land?
Yes. I know, because I've walked it. Looked at it, because we evaluated the detention pond as con con, and a number of times, we were out there sometimes for just investigative purposes, but I've been on that. I haven't been there in probably eight months, but it was built and there and present.
Well, we know why. And then, we need the easement, as shown as such, as, you know, I, I've... Even though it's under special conditions and all that, I think it should show it on a map.
No, and I don't disagree with you, Dick, I'm not saying it shouldn't be there, I'm only here to set, to inform the board that it does exist.
There is a pathway.
There is a pathway from the backside of the detention pond, and so there must be access.
Somewhere in, somewhere in this area is...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's going to be beside... I mean, it literally comes off, I think it might be, is the detention pond in the open space?
It's totally possible, I have no idea.
Because I, I remember walking, basically, there's one, after this cul-de-sac, there's one house lot, and you walk basically along the property line, probably on the open space side of it, and you go around to the back of the detention pond. And there's this little ramp that goes down to the DCR land and comes out to the rail trail. It's a short ramp, it is not ADA compliant, it cannot be ADA compliant, because there isn't enough space before DCR land to build the ramp, so it's, it's an incline, it's noticeable.
Now, you say that, that goes down that way.
I'm pretty sure it goes this way towards, I mean, this is, again, best recollection from this map, but it's out, it's out and around and...
Wow.
So, could we vote to just map? I mean, the current, with, with the, um, with the local map overlay.
Yeah, I mean, see what they're doing here for that.
So, this is the north end of Molten. Right? Well, you gotta wait, oh, no, you can't do anything till it's, till you agree.
It's too slow. Uh, what's a good physical address today?
Sixty Palm Lake, wow.
Molten Pond's right there.
I was going to say, we can just zoom in right here.
Uh, no, let's zoom in.
Well, this is Molten right here.
Yeah, that's Molten.
That's Palm Lake, that's, well, it's...
It's Molten up here, so you're going to be...
For, oh, wait a second, which one are we at? I thought we were talking about, oh, Brittenall, I'm sorry, I lied, okay, everything I said applied.
Pull it, keep pulling.
To, to Bryce Lemon.
Bryce Lemon, oh.
So, I completely apologize, I, I missed the context.
So, you still want to look at it?
Yeah.
This is where you are, I think it's in this area.
This is the rail trail, right?
Keep moving it over.
That's the subdivision itself, you want a overlay of what you want for the overlay?
Yeah. Just drag it, drag it over some more to the left, and hopefully the rail trail will come up.
I just saw it in the corner.
Yeah, the rail trail's down.
Down over here.
No, it's all the way from the top down.
If you go down there, you'll see it.
Pull it over more, more.
Right there?
There it is.
Yeah, that's it, right there.
And the, the part of the wetland that's, uh, that is, uh... Is the lower, you know, lower part, you can stay out of the wetlands.
So, you're, so somewhere from here...
Somehow from there down to there.
Yeah, but he has to cross somebody else's land, could you hover over twenty-four and twenty-five?
And that's Watchus at Greenways, and...
Yeah, and twenty-five is...
Watchus at Greenways.
Okay, so it's all Watchus at Greenways.
Yes, it is. And that's Watchus at Greenways, and that's, you know, surely. So, anyways, and as I...
Is there already something right here?
There's no way, no, they would have had to do a crossing, actually, they would have had to do multiple crossings.
And like I said, the, the, it gets very narrow where that little jog is from Molten Pond, that little stream that comes up there jogs up and then back down.
So, is the best way straight, like?
No. From up there down to that little, little high rise on that stream, yeah, cross that, and then to the rail trail.
But now, if that, if that drawing is accurate, lot eighty-seven and lot eighty-eight, those two lots, they're leaving the, the edge of the cul-de-sac out of those lots.
Right.
Right, which looks like that's going to be open space, it suggests...
Which that would be access.
Well, that's the old one, and that's not the new one, the new one is what you have here, and, and it's, there is no access.
Does...
Yeah, there is, right there, you can see it.
Yeah, there is.
Well, what the heck is this one I got here? Oh, yeah, okay, the old one versus the new one. No. No.
This is the one in, oh, God.
Right, so is that, is that old or new version?
This is, this is the old one, this is oh seven, and this one here...
What, what you see up here is the new version of Brittle Estates, I believe this is the, there's a break between the subdivisions someplace. And why is it where it is here?
Well, yeah, it's, it's grizzly, it's, if the spot where it's grizzly turns from a white road to a... Right there is the split, I believe.
When I looked at the dates, I tried to find the map with the, with the correct dates on it, and this one had the, the Moore Martin date updates, and this is the old one.
So, this is a twenty-ten map. So, do we have a newer map?
Uh, this is, we have the, we have the plans in the office, one of the benefits of not being in the office, I guess.
And that's, that's it right there.
Thank you.
I'm just saying this will be coming back on the ninth, I'll bring both plans that's, uh, exist for Brittle Estates and...
Owen, twelve eleven twenty.
So, I'd...
And then three twenty-four, two thousand eight.
Right, so is there a date?
In the box up...
So, those lots completely changed.
Some, someplace around here, is the revised dates.
No, this is a twenty-twenty, twelve eleven twenty twenty.
So, that access is gone.
Well, the access from there, yeah.
From that.
And personally, I doubt that anyone in the conservation or DCR would be happy with the access that goes right along that stream. But that's conjecture. Right, because this whole stream that flows all the way, that's...
The blue is open space.
I mean, he could literally claim anywhere along this stretch of road is access right.
Yeah.
And, as I said, my concern is going to be crossing this stream.
Well... And that's one of the reasons why I wanted him to, I don't know how tight he's got this, if he's got enough for an easement out the back and then down across, because this is the narrowest spot to get across. Colleen had no problem, you know, he'd like, she'd like to have him go all the way to the rail trail, but if they need to, you know, you know, he'll only go to their property, fine, but... But it, it was in our bylaws way back, and it was in the original ones when Neil Weiner was on our board, and, and that's when it was put in.
Well, I guess, just to notify Mr. Blair.
Yeah.
He needs to indicate that on the plan. And if we don't see it, that's going to be another holdup, not be approved. Somehow or other, where he did reconfigure all of this, I think he would be able to put in even a twenty-foot easement.
Yeah.
Off that deck.
And it does say in our regs how wide the easement has to be and everything else, it's in there.
Is it?
Yeah.
Because he actually took out two lots from that plan, if I'm looking at this, and he, and he relocated them out
Right.
to be three lots, actually, if I'm reading this right.
Yeah, you added an extra lot.
You added one, two, three, and he took away those two, there could be something else going on. And this, does, is this also related to the lot that was... That could have been part of Bear Hill, that was actually really technically part of the...
That's why it was thirty-three, and now it's thirty-four.
So, he changed it in the midst of, basically, because, yeah, we talked about this one, he changed it all, and, but there was supposed to be an access out the back.
Well, it's open space subdivision regs, and how do you get to the open space? And you would think that, you know, he would make it easier for the residents there, you know, to allow them to get to it easy.
And so, he'd come right out the back of that cul-de-sac, because otherwise you, you know, then you get somebody like, you know, I mean, I guess they could just walk out their backyard and all these.
All, those people can.
No, these people can.
But how about the other people, you know?
The people across the street over there would have to...
Exactly, yeah.
Go all the way down and around.
We, we don't have anything on the bylaws here, how easy it has to be up there.
No.
It just has to be access.
Access.
Yeah, I would maintain that, that with this plan, that whole corner of the street is access.
Yes, yeah.
Right.
All of the open space does have some access.
So, does he have to create that path, or he just has to allow?
No, he creates the...
He has to create a path, so if it were, I mean, I'm just saying, for argument's sake, to change the lots over here, and these two are gone, if he were to have a... You know?
The problem with that is that stream that's not entirely visible right there, it's, no, it's very...
So, you're going to have two crossings.
Look, look, look at the, these darker lines right here.
Yeah.
That's the stream. I believe.
So, could you go in on this side? No, so the lots are coming right up to it?
I'm not saying it's impossible, I'm saying I don't know how, that's, that's for an engineer to figure out.
You know, I'm not sure if we can require him to actually have that path in.
I say we try.
Well...
Well, our best thing to do is...
Guilt him into it, I hope he's listening.
Read, read.
Well, it's on.
Well, the thing, the thing is, uh, make it better, he's going to provide access to it.
And how wide the access has to be.
It's listed in here, so it's best to read it and find out what it says.
Well, yeah.
So, how would this go, Dave, would you be able to, and you already did find it once for Mr. Williams, it sounds like you found that verbiage in there where it said ten, whatever years ago, could we just take a photocopy of that?
I'm not sure.
And a memo, the planning board just wanted to remind you, Mr. Blair, that this was in the verbiage from ten years ago, it came up in our meeting. Can you please provide us with a current status?
Access plan.
On the access plan, and when, when we would be able to see it on a, on an actual plan.
I need to research it, actually, I have to, I gotta, I have to resource this before doing anything else.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
And also, this will be coming back on the ninth of November for the continuance of what we're talking about now, which is Brittle Estates subdivision, modification, amendment, or revision, so this opportunity for the board to discuss with the African at that meeting. So this opportunity for the board to discuss with the applicant at that meeting, with research, it would be doing the meantime.
Has the A and R that took away those two lots and created the three at the end, has that been?
No.
No, okay. So then this is, in fact, the plan today?
Yes.
Correct, 'cause that's what you're talking about, he hadn't updated this.
So if he hasn't done that, then he has all the opportunity in the world to create access to create an easement.
I thought this one was revised.
This one says twelve eleven twenty.
This is...
I don't know who wrote that on there, but...
It's a proposal.
This is, this is the proposal if we...
Even all, all the different dates, even the, not the newest one, but even to the other way, way back.
Yeah, th- this is what he is proposing, once we finish this public hearing, and if we approve the amendment. This is what he's saying he wants it to look like.
To look like now.
Is he different than the previous plan?
Right.
Which is this? That's the previous, this is what the applicant seeks out now, and after the A and R, this is...
Uh, yeah, that's the old one.
That was the first.
Yeah.
And then this is, this is the now.
Yeah. And that had the thirty-four lots in it.
Yeah, show the, show the, show it.
Show it.
Is he enough? All right. If he doesn't show it, we don't approve it, right?
Okay, anything else on Brittle?
Is that yours or mine?
I think that's mine.
Okay.
Uh, Maple Hill.
You have correspondence from the Conservation Commission and a comment about, uh, street acceptance.
I don't know what it is.
This is the one that has, before she was this, it's a now one, page, page three.
Which, um... As far as I'm concerned, um, this comment is, is basically to the select board, not to us.
Conservation.
If the street acceptance is at the town meeting, so it's up to the select board if they're going to put another warrant on it.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Okay, so this is just an FYI kind of, we don't need to respond, do we?
No, we don't need a response. It's just information transmitted to the planning board.
Nor, nor, as far as I'm concerned, take any particular action.
Right.
In, in, in other words, their problem with not having a conservation commission should not affect our recommendation.
Right, I agree.
Because it's their territory, the select board's territory, right? Okay, and I think that's all on Maple Hill.
Yeah, uh, just the street acceptance, so it's my understanding that it's not on the warrant because it was not ready. Because not all the relevant information was received on a timely basis. To coordinate with the planning board's hearing and review of the consulting engineer, the layout here for the select board, with the, with the notice of requirements, and the town clerk's responsibility afterwards to notify town leaders. All those timelines together were too tight, and this motion wasn't received. At least that's as far as I understand it.
Right.
At this point.
So, okay, next, Bryce Lemon. I don't think we have anything on Bryce Lemon.
No, the board looked at the information last week for that, consulting reports.
Uh, well, once again, Brittle Estates comes up again here.
There are no new consulting engineer reports for that.
I don't think we have anything to do on Bear Hill too, either.
No, for Bear Hill.
Yeah. Wow.
In that special meeting, you knocked out a lot of the review of the consulting reports.
Yeah.
And then the last item.
The last item is the zoning request from the town administrator.
I made motion to adjourn. There's already a question from the town administrator. I, uh, now, did not we at our annual town meeting have Sean have this marijuana?
No.
Yes, this was one of them. He wanted to change the number.
Was it?
Yeah, he had many, as far as I understood it, he had many, like four to five requests, and I think this was one of them, to change the number of LMEs, licensed marijuana establishments that could be permitted on one parcel.
Correct.
To modify it from no more than one to some number greater than one.
And I'm saying, no change.
What is, um...
That's why I'm making a motion to adjourn. The last one on the agenda.
It just didn't seem like what you said. Didn't seem like it said that it...
Norm, would the planning commission please hold a hearing on the following bylaw amendment? As a town, we do not want the company doing cultivation.
We, we have to, if we go across, we have to hold a public hearing.
We have to what?
We have to hold a public hearing.
Oh, yeah, but, uh...
But I thought it...
So what they want...
When it doesn't pass?
By eliminating section eighty-seven sub C in its entirety, but...
We have that?
I personally don't remember what eighty-seven sub C is.
The set says that...
It's all about two...
Not allowed to be any more than one LME on any one parcel.
No matter how big the parcel is.
Have to one, just say that again, because it would make sure...
Yeah, not allowed to have any more than one LME on any one parcel of land.
One?
Licensed marijuana establishment.
Okay.
And that could be...
Oh, okay, I'm, now I get you, I was missing the initial...
So they're saying there couldn't be one in the hair salon and one in honey farms?
No, I got them.
You know what I mean? Right?
Yeah.
And then with that matter of one's cultivating and one's selling, there's still licensed marijuana establishments, correct?
That's still correct.
So I'm still, you know, I'm not...
Not making a distinction with...
So this is a...
What they are, they could grow, cultivate, sell, cook, whatever it is.
We do not want the company doing cultivation to have to move the product.
Three years before you can bring it back?
Two.
Two years to bring it back?
Unless there was a favorable recommendation made by the planning board. Then it could come back.
It's a town meeting. I thought at a town meeting, if it fails, you could not bring it back for two years?
Unless there was a favorable recommendation made by the planning board, then it could come back within two years. But in this, in that case, there was no favorable recommendation, motion, the action was to take no action.
And now...
I don't know where that leaves that, to be perfectly honest with you.
It's probably a question for the town administration to ask of town council.
Yeah.
Which I will transmit that.
So Ron's...
The thing is... Was Sean's motion exactly the same as this?
No.
It wasn't?
No, Sean's motion, from what I remember, was...
Was to just insert another number.
Insert another number. This is just striking it as entirety, so it's technically not the same, substantially different.
Yeah.
So I think the substantial difference is what's going to allow it to go forward.
Yeah.
So Ron's asking, would the planning board support eliminating...
Not, not supporting. All he's asking is for us to hold a public hearing.
Hold a, okay. Well, we hold a public hearing to eliminate eighty-seven.
Right.
Sub C, which states only one establishment per parcel. Just taking it right out, so it's not even there.
That's their proposal.
Which then would in turn mean that you could have two per parcel.
Or, or no, no limit.
Or no limit, right, not two.
Two, three, four, six.
Say no.
You know, at the end of the day, I mean, I, it's, I don't think it's good. I mean, I think this whole marijuana thing, by the time all this stuff ends up happening...
What did they say last week? They're starting to shut down already, they're running out of customers?
So how does a eighty-seven, which you say limits the number of licenses per property, relate to the moving product across the street to a different facility?
I, I can explain this. So at the Plaza, the Plaza is really two parcels.
Yeah, well, we're talking about the Sims.
The Sims, the time, the Sims piece of it. So currently, there are two host agreements to the same party. One host agreement was to allow for cultivation in the Sims piece, behind the KP's, on about ten thousand square feet, indoor cultivation. That was RFP one, host agreement one. And the same party came in with another host, well, they came in, they came in with, with cultivation with a straight reference to manufacturing in that RFP.
Right.
Having been notified to read the bylaw and to be aware of what the restraints are. So they cultivation and manufacturing together. Having reviewed it and reviewing this bylaw, we went back to them and said, well, there's an issue with the number of LMEs on one parcel. So they came back with a second RFP, and the second host agreement was written just for the manufacturing. The manufacturing is an offshoot of the cultivation.
So they want to manufacture and cul- and cultivate on the Sims cap property?
Yes, in the same, basically the same space.
Yes.
But this prevents that from happening. What this requires is that they have to do one cultivation on one parcel, manufacturing on another parcel.
I thought they were in the same space. And what, and what has that to do with crossing the road?
Because that's where they're going to sell it.
It's not really, I mean, crossing the road is not...
They're not going to sell it over there?
I'm confused. Is there any way we can get back on the GIS real quick to see where these parcels are split?
Well, they're right down there.
But I'm just curious.
They're going to build a retail facility.
This is a, that's, that's a different RFP, a different host agreement.
So this, this one you're talking about is the, the...
Manufacturing.
Barry?
I have no idea.
So it's not one across the street?
No, that's...
Well, you know, and, and that's... I think Ron is taking a little bit of license in using that language. Okay?
Uh-huh.
Okay, to have to cross the street.
It's the same side of the street.
Because, because...
It's the map.
I, I believe, actually, they could subdivide some of the land.
Yes, it's, it's possible. So the activity that we're talking about with the two RFPs, manufacturing and cultivation, are on, was highlighted in yellow. Two RFPs were granted, two RFPs were issued, two host agreements were granted to the same applicant, despite the fact that there's this language here. The applicant, one solution is to actually create another parcel on what's highlighted and put up a smaller building for manufacturing. So then they would cultivate in the main building, manufacture in another building on a newly created parcel, that's one solution. That would allow for one LME on one parcel, one LME on the other parcel. The alternative, or what's being suggested here, is the bylaw change to allow all of activities to happen in what's highlighted in yellow, without having to create a new parcel, to have one activity cultivation on one and manufacturing on the other.
And they're both on this...
Yeah, the thing is, what, 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 I think Ron is trying to, and I'm going to say incorrectly. He says, yeah, they're going to carry it across the street. He would just be carrying it from one building to another.
To another building.
On a separate parcel.
Where the, where's the sales of this product at?
I, I believe that the sales are literally across the street, because that's where the...
On B?
Yeah, but that's not this...
That's a different operator.
That's a different operator?
That's a different operator.
Yeah, that's different.
There's one operator who has these cultivation and manufacturing, this one operator, it's a separate operator of the retail across the street, as a separate entity.
So we are going to potentially have three LMEs right here?
Yep.
One, maybe one, two, one, two, three?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, no.
At the end of the day, with the possibility for more, if that's not happening.
And I still just have, because I'm kind of new to the whole marijuana thing, so manufact- cultivation is classified as, what, you're cutting the plant down and then you're hanging it up to dry? And then after that?
No, that's where, that's you plant the seed and you grow it.
Yeah.
So once you...
And you harvest it.
But cultivation is har- isn't...
Cultivation is considered taking care of the plants.
Until, until it's harvested.
Yes.
And then once it's harvested, then it goes to manufacturing.
And I guess manufacturing is basically clipping off the buds, cleaning them up, packaging it.
Well, they can do, yeah, exactly, or they're making, like I said, they're going to start cooking the chocolates and peanut butter spreads and all those things. So that would happen in another building, and then it would be, so none of this, and again, this company isn't even going to sell their product potentially, or maybe it's irrelevant, they could sell it across, they could sell it wherever they want, right? They have the license to sell wherever they want.
They could, but they're not a retailer per se. They may sell it to a retailer.
And a cultivator.
But they're not the retailer that we're talking about across the street, it's a different entity.
Yeah, but if they want to sell their product across the street, that's the problem?
I don't think it's a problem, no different than...
I know, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, I think that what, to, to Norm's point, um, across the street to a different facility, it should just be move the product to a different facility.
Yeah.
I mean, across the street is maybe relevant in some terms, but I don't think it is here.
It's on the same side of the street.
Same side of the street, instead of the same building, but it's different, it's the same company with two licenses, because the same company has a cultivation license and a manufacturing license.
Granted two host agreements for those two, like, those two license categories, yes.
And they were able to have those under the same building?
Not at this moment, because of the limitation on the number of LMEs on the same parcel.
No, I'm sorry, by, by the state law, they are, though.
I think so.
I guess the state is considering the license.
Because the reason I bring that up for me and alcohol is you, two licenses cannot occupy the same space, period, end of story. So why is ma- marijuana different?
I don't know if they're going to occupy the exact same space within one building, there may be a separation within the building itself, I don't know the details for that, that's for them to explain.
That, that thing comes into this whole play, this is why, I mean, it's a little...
But that's, that's the alcohol commission, and this is the marijuana commission.
So how do we know that that's...
That's, that's their problem.
Hmm, that's the alcohol commission.
That's their problem.
We wrote the marijuana law, did you know that?
I, for, yeah, no, I totally get that this is not, what I'm saying is that the state of Massachusetts doesn't allow two alcohol licenses to be in the same building.
Right, now listen.
So I'm just saying, but they do allow it for marijuana.
But they do allow the marijuana commission.
If they don't, then the state will have to turn down their license to do it.
The marijuana commission makes her own rules, separate from the alcohol commission.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I know that.
Yeah, but that's really the answer why they're different.
Well, we don't know that they're different, we just know that these people are trying to get...
Your word.
I just found it odd that you would be able to do it both in the same building.
But I...
Is this going to be the...
With two licenses.
Is this going to be the only place? I mean, it's, if he changes it, does that just limit it to here or any place in Raleigh?
Any place.
See, and that's what I mean.
So you cannot...
No way, no, because I know what the, the bottom, I, I know what's feeding Ra- uh, Ron, and I don't like it, so therefore it's, no.
That has to be decided on a public hearing.
We have to have a public hearing.
It's required, so that's part of this...
And he supplies the information for us? How do we know what we're talking about?
So if we have to hold a public hearing, that's where we're going to...
Certainly not very clear to me at the moment.
I'm not, believe me, I'm...
Well, it is right there.
A little foggy right now, too, I don't really understand it.
So we want to, what he, he wants to enlimit this whole eighty-seven, section eighty-seven.
He wants to eliminate it.
And, and replace it with nothing?
Right.
So what I need to do is see what section eighty-seven specifically says.
Yeah.
And it says that you can cross the street? I mean, do you have it there?
Yeah, section eighty-seven, point C, heading, one LME only.
One what?
LME.
Licensed marijuana establishment.
Okay, okay, LL.
Which is the heading.
Oh, gotcha.
And then the text after the heading is, no special permit granted under this article shall allow for the concurrent operation of two or more LMEs on the same parcel of land.
Wait, how does that, there's something here that my brain is just not processing, that that relates to taking your product across the street?
It doesn't.
It doesn't.
All right, so...
It's irrelevant, across the street is irrelevant.
Isn't that mass, mass law? That's mass law.
That's the local zoning bylaw.
That's our bylaw, that we...
Which we got.
Like I say, this is, this is a cross-the-street thing.
Cross-the-street thing.
All right.
All right. So the question that... So the question that, what he, the upshot of it is that we're really looking at whether or not you can have, you can grow it and process it in the same building.
And not only here, also, don't, don't just look at this picture, because that's what's ticking me off, it's something else.
Can you tell me?
Well...
At home, when I take you home, I will.
All right.
No, you, you remember, you remember the table in the marijuana bylaw?
The ti- yeah.
There's about six different kinds of LMEs?
Yeah.
Something like that.
So...
With this thing out of there...
Oh, this is what, it's in the book, okay.
Okay, someone could, on one parcel of land, run one of each of those, all on the same parcel, six different ones.
And that's manufacturing, cultivation, sales, well, the other ones, they...
Consumption, right.
Lab, laboratories, uh...
Research.
Marijuana research facility.
Research facilities.
It, it could actually be five of the same, because we have five licenses, we are willing to...
Right, there's only a limit on the number for retail, there's no limit on the number, the, the other ones, you could have five of the same category, you could have five cultivators hypothetically.
You could have one of each, and how many licenses do we have in the town for sales?
A total of five licenses, one of each.
One of each of five, is that correct?
One of each of...
No, 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 it's five licenses is what, the, the five licenses, five LMEs.
Five LMEs. So we could have five sales?
With only one retail being out here.
Only one retail, that's, that's a specific limit.
So we now have a total of four LMEs?
Four other LMEs.
When the sales one, and hypothetically is going over here, one already, and then if two go in there, we got room in town for two more.
That's right.
And this one has currently...
But they'd have to be different?
No, they would, they couldn't be a sales, but they'd have to be a laboratory, a cultivation, a manufacturing, so I'm just hypothetically...
We could become the marijuana capital of...
No, I'm, I'm looking at it where, and I don't think it's a great location, to be honest with you, I'd have rather seen it down at Four Corners or somewhere else, but at this point, I don't think that's gonna change. So would you rather have...
You're gonna...
Two of them in the same area instead of four of them, one here, one here, one...
Could I just, could I just cut in, I think we're bearing it to hearing territory.
Yeah.
The purpose was to notify the board that there was a request to have a hearing for this, so we facilitated that request, wrote the legal ad, sent it to the paper.
Yeah. Which haven't you already done it?
We've already done that, and scheduled for the ninth, I don't, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, that's what I write.
I don't want to go too far into hearing territory.
So basically, he's not asking our permission, because he doesn't need our permission.
It's a, that's part of the...
We have to do it.
I think that's the justification.
And we've already done it.
The board has to have a hearing on going there.
Right, and that's already filed.
Does the board have to support?
No, we do have to make a recommendation.
Right, as provisionally.
Make a recommendation that we...
It could be favorable or unfavorable.
That means favorable, unfavorable, I think.
Unfavorable, no action, uh, go stop it.
So this hearing is on the ninth already?
Yes, and...
That was the, what you're talking about.
I think the understanding is that the relevant parties who have an interest in this will have to show up and make their presentation. Staff will not be able to make this presentation on their behalf, we do not have enough knowledge or reasons to justify it one way or the other, so...
I think it's, yeah, there's, there's a lot of conversation.
This is on, is this on the warrant, place card on the warrant?
Article twenty-two.
It'll be placed there on Tuesday, on Thursday.
It's not, yes, it's like...
So they could be placing this before we even have a public hearing, I mean, this is gonna be close, it's fine, but... This could bring up some conversation, and Article twenty-two, stay until the end, you know?
And you were worried about accessory apartment.
Right! That was gonna, get that right after, because everybody will take off after, this is gonna bring up some conversation, so I guess...
I don't think that that many people will expect it anyway.
Motion to adjourn?
Tech, did you have that?
We had that ten, ten minutes ago. So other than any more discussion, there really shouldn't be any more discussion, because we're approaching around...
Because you're getting into the harm of the matter.
Yeah.
Public hearing will be to eliminate that whole section.
Yep.
That would be, yeah.
Hmm. And are we having a discussion to see what we recommend?
After the public hearing.
After the hearing.
After the public hearing, not right now, because I would, I could sit here for another hour right now, but I'm not gonna do this, you guys.
I guess I'll do an information session, then the hearing, or how do you wanna run that? I remember, how do you wanna know collectively?
I don't think we should do that, why, why an information session?
I, I guess not, because it's not as mature as the accessory going in the bylaw, it's more mature.
We're not sponsoring it.
You're right, I'm right, I'm right, that's right.
You want people to give us information, right?
Yeah, I, I would, I would imagine if I'm Mayor, Mayor Mr. Chair, that, that any interested parties would have their presentations ready
Yeah.
for the hearing proper enough for an information session in advance.
No, you're right, you're right.
So is the location of the hearing here?
Yeah.
So the question is, is this room big enough?
I'll bet you...
This could get, yeah, because I don't know, this could go outside.
They could go outside in the parking lot.
I'll bet you there's not too many people that care.
I don't know about that.
To be very, to be very honest with you, I, I, I've... I don't have strong feelings one way or another about this. It's kind, it's kind of one of these things where, you know, I think, I, I made myself well-known a long time ago, I don't favor anything regarding recreational marijuana, but it's here, so...
You know, I'm probably pretty well-known as favoring it, so...
So I won't. Now said, yes, we're gonna have it, I don't know.
And, and you'll get, what, you got fifteen minutes, you go to the hubris and they're growing it, and they're gonna be selling it up there?
Yeah, they are.
And they're also now starting to think second thoughts, because they're finding out that the black market is cheaper than what they can do with it.
Yeah. It may die under some...
The black market doesn't usually have a conflict.
It's a big, you do, you get a lot of people that are just starting right now, or they're just, it'll take two years to get this something going.
Mr. Chair, has, have there been any applications for special permit for an LME yet?
Nope.
No.
I didn't think so, okay, thank you.
I think the reason for that is the applicants are waiting to get their licenses from the Commonwealth first, and then do the special permit. I think they have to have their license from the Commonwealth first before they can do the special permit, if I'm not mistaken.
I think so.
That would make sense, it'd have...
I didn't think it needed to be granted.
Why would we go through the...
To begin, to begin the process, because the permit process is non-trivial.
So you're, you're saying just want to clear for the little, to be able to sell, for...
For any, for any LME, they have to get, they, they don't, they do, they can't be, they can't be, grant the special permit till they have the license, but they can begin the special permit process as long as they have submitted.
That's right.
Yeah.
And didn't they submit, didn't the people from Barry submit to the select board?
Oh, yeah, because they had the license, they already had the agreement.
Yeah.
Is the agreement done and signed, I don't know.
I have no idea.
Neither do I.
I think the host agreement is done, but they're waiting for their license.
Right.
On both, on...
Oh, we're talking about the Barry one across the street.
The sales, the sales thing, and then this manufacturing, do you even know who this company is, or does it, is it irrelevant at this point?
I'm rounding my rock hand, I mean...
For me, just curiosity.
Could you be in the select board minutes? I can't quite remember when the HCA was signed, but it was probably in the last two months, um, that they approved the one for this company.
Well, go get you a breakfast sausage and go around the back and just get your...
I think the company also, two others, or had an agreement with...
The stability is now...
And they were told that they had to get sort of one order to get...
I don't know what the laws are about the manufacturers, and, again, I'm not opposed, but somebody is, somebody's gonna bring that up.
I guess in, in quantity, I guess it sticks.
It can, but you know what?
Yeah, but you have to, I mean, there is part of the licensing...
Oh, yeah.
That you have to control.
They have to control, oh, they should.
You know, when I used to work at the, at the hardware store, watch the lumber, go out back and the smell from the pizza place, it got to the point where...
Yeah, that was the thing.